Item is approval of today's agenda.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, citizens to be heard. None, improvement of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval, second.
Motion and a second to pay the bills, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Requests for readjustment in property taxes, Lori.
Do I have a copy, do you have a copy of, can I give it to you guys?
Take one of those.
You can sit here, Lori.
Yeah, you can sit, sure.
So, my name's Lori Feigum, and I'm just here to talk about our property taxes. We have a piece of land between Glenon and Gilworth on Highway 10. And each year we've paid property taxes anywhere from $600 to $1,000, as you can see on the handout that I gave. But I'm just talking about the ones from the year 2019. Each year we have filled out the special ag, homestead, credit paperwork. So we've gotten the reduction, but in 2019, we didn't. So I checked on that. And they're, they said that we didn't turn in the 156 easy form. We've turned it in every year, so there's no reason why I wouldn't have that year. And so I'm just 99% sure I did. But could it be possible that I didn't? Maybe, I mean, yes, obviously, it could. Could it have been lost or something at the tax office? I mean, that's a possibility too, I guess. But I guess the, why, this one thing is too, that, you know, it can, it jumped at $1,600, that, you know, I didn't get a phone call or anything saying that we're missing this piece of information. You know, as, you know, he, this is the, the big jump if you don't turn this in. So I guess I'm just asking for readjustment of that $1,600 for the 2019 year, which I feel is that money belongs to us.
Okay. Nancy, do you have anything for us on that?
Well, not really. Probably went over it mostly what had occurred. Yes, there was definitely a large increase in her pain in '19, along with losing the homestead class, which would go at .5 versus 1% for tax capacity, she lost that. She also lost $490 of a ag market value homestead cred- credit, excuse me. And she still was eligible to get the school ag credit, but those combinations then made that large increase for pain in '19. And yes, this is special ag, so it is an annual application. It's the application, it's the 156 that's needed, and a Schedule F.
What does the 156 easy form do?
It's from the FSA office, and it is to show us who's actually the active farmer on the property, and if then that active farmer is eligible to help her get homestead class on that property.
So is that a new form, or is that a form we've been using for years?
Been using it for years.
Okay.
And you didn't have any record of getting that form?
We got the application and the Schedule F information, but no 156. And this would have been late of '18 is when this process took place.
And every other year, I've turned in everything. It's just odd that it wouldn't have been there this year, or that, that year.
So what would be the difference if the, if you had the form or record?
Yeah, I'd say it would be fairly close to what was paid last year. You know, if taxes went up, then there'd be a slight increase, I would assume, but I didn't figure out what they would be. But those additional things would have definitely lowered her taxes.
My personal feeling is this is that, and I think we've initiated rules on it now, or some of the faults on it, I mean, that we covered that, is that we should have caught it too, you know, before. And I realize at that time, I think you weren't doing them until after the deadline, you know, and I think when people turn in these forms, you know, we should check them, you know, did they have all the right forms, you know? It's like taking out a builder permit, and you build a house, and all of a sudden, you find out, hey, you can't build it there, you know, it's just, we should have caught it before too, you know? I think we do work for the citizens, and I think that is part of our requirement to tell them, hey, you forgot to fill out a form. And I would make a motion that we approve her request that it's, that we take off that $1,500 or whatever it is.
You have a motion?
I'll second the motion, but I just want to clarify, whatever, the specific amount, whatever it would have been with that, that 156 would be reflected in the motion.
Okay.
I have a question. Does the, is it the property owner's responsibility to get the 156 form, or is that sent to them as part of our package?
It's part of their responsibility. And this has been an annual application process for, well, since the '97 flood.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to blame anybody, say that we lost it, or we didn't send it.
I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand that how, how the landowner, property owner gets the information that they need to fill out. And, and, you know, because I, because I think if, if they have to go out and get that on their own, you know, I, to me, it would, it should be something that maybe you should think about, but at the same point in time, from a convenience standpoint, I don't, I...
I just feel when we accept an application, we should look at and say, you know, this is completed, it is not complete, and check it before the deadline. And I think we're doing that now, but that wasn't done at that time, you know, and it just, before last year, so...
Whereas like, so this year, I think there, I sent in a form, but it didn't have the date on it, and someone did call me and say, this, this form you sent in doesn't have the date, we need another copy that has the date, and then I re-sent it in, so that made this packet complete.
Well, you know, the way I look, so you have a record of, of doing this, which makes a difference for me in terms of supporting the, you know, the motion, but, and there's no history of any problem with this in the past, Nancy, that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, I just went back one year to see what was on file, and everything was fine at that point.
Well, you can see the record of her payments.
Yeah, with this, it shows that they've, they've done it, so I guess, you know, for, for this year, I'd be willing to support that motion, so...
And I think to clarify, because of my second, I look back at this, not only does it show that they've been due, you know, dutifully doing the 156, because back to 2012, we don't see any of that major increase, but also, there's no penalty in fines. These are payments that are being made on time, and to have submitted all the other documents at the same time, and was just missing this, it's not, that's why I can support this.
I don't want to go too much, but the people that have the 156, are there, are there quite a few of those throughout the county that?
That actually qualify for special ag?
Yeah.
I think we sent over 200 applications out in July this year, so yes. And we were very diligent this year, as far as we put a soft deadline to get them in as soon as we could, so that we could reflect it better on TMT notices. We've done a lot of phone calling and saying, where's your application, you know, we have a deadline. And the other part is, the deadline is December 15th. It's an awkward deadline, you know, so this information does not go out typically on a TMT, if they don't get it in, you know, that kind of thing, but we changed our policies.
I mean, I'm not trying to reflect anything on the, the office, because I think they do the, I mean, they did their job. The form wasn't there, they didn't see, they did their job, but...
So going to Commissioner Gross's comments, the, the people who have had that historically, is there, is there a way within our software that, that something can kick out that says, oh, they didn't file this form this year? Is there, is there such a thing that we could do? I mean, software can do a lot of things nowadays, I guess, but I'm just curious about that.
I guess we're running off of a spreadsheet presently, and that's our tracking device that we use. And every time an application comes in, we review the application itself, we review that they have a Schedule F, and then we go through that 156 and match up their parcel numbers that they're supposed to supply to us with legal descriptions that the FSA supplies, and verify that it's the right operator.
Well, I would like to figure out a way for us where we could determine if somebody inadvertently missed out on that, because that's a significant dollar amount difference between $618 and $2,200. You know, that's a significant difference, and, you know, I mean, every human being is prone to errors now and then, and I don't know that it should cost, just for one error, it should cost that kind of money, you know, so, anyway, I'm going to support the motion, but I hope we can...
Okay. We've, any, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Lori, Merry Christmas. Keep track of it, keep track of it in the future, so...
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Okay, next item, Julie.
Bid opening for food service for correctional facilities, detox and the juveniles during the morning.
Couldn't be that hard.
Good morning. Thank you guys, glad to hold there.
Two, especially with all.
Really?
Yeah, it's two, so the first one...
Must be samples, huh?
Yeah, no, I don't think so. First one, it's in there for a while, I'm going to try it.
Thank you, egg and cheese biscuits.
This one's from Trinity Food Service. Trinity Food Service.
Are these the same that we had asked?
Yes, they're the same two companies that are bidding. These haven't been opened, so...
Obviously.
All right. So this is Trinity Food, cost, bid form, looks like, based on a sliding scale. So if we have 103 meals to 112 meals, it'd be $3.13.
103 to 112?
Yep.
It's what?
$3.13.
Okay, it's 313?
Yep, 313.
Okay.
The next one up would be 113 inmates to 122, which is $2.94. 123 inmates to 132 inmates, it'd be $2.79. You've got to keep in mind, all the meals are combined, so that's not, so really, we should just probably start talking about between the, I'm guessing, the 133 up to 172 right now, because the jail's running high. So let's just start, so start with that. So 133 meals to 142 meals is $2.65. 143 meals to 152 meals would be $2.54. 153 meals to 162 meals, $2.44, so...
Anything over that is 244?
No, anything more, it keeps going down.
Oh, it keeps going down.
Everything will just keep going down, the more we purchase, so if the jail's running 120 right there, well, we're already got it down. But then you have detox, you have another 10 to 15, and 60, yeah.
So does that include the juvenile?
It does, it's all, all meals, it says.
So that's, yeah, because that includes both secure and unsecure, so...
Yep.
So you're likely to have 60 there.
Yeah, so if you're looking at 183 meals per meal, for example, if you add everything up, if everybody's got quite a few people in there, you're looking at $2.21.
Does that rate change daily, or does it change weekly, or...
Change by the day, by the meal. So for lunch, if I had 180 lunches that day, it'd be the low price, but if I dropped down to 150, it'd be a different price.
So you got to give them a count every, for every three times a day?
Yep, we do, and we already do that now, so...
I know, that's fine, I just put them outwards.
Yep, yep.
All right.
So that compared to our last process, that's quite...
Well, for Trinity, it's a little bit more, but then we took out some other things, and so it, it seems reasonable.
I think you get the 244, 221, 244, that's...
Yeah, I think... Try this one.
Here's right here. No, there's a little sharp edge on that. Be careful. No.
Of course, good.
I think the highway department...
There we go.
Obviously, they got through that.
Yes.
Probably shouldn't leave that right there.
So the next one would be Summit Foods, Summit Foods, where's the binder?
That's the current.
Yep.
And this one is who?
Summit Foods, yep. Need a nap again.
Looks quicker.
Yeah, I don't know what that is. Looks like they have one bid for all meals, regardless of the number, and it's $2.49 a meal.
249?
Yep, 249, which is less than what we're paying right now.
What are we paying right now?
Depends, it's on a sliding scale right now, so it really depends on our numbers. And they base it only on the jail numbers right now, but this other company does something a little different, so... But those will be their two bids. At this point, we would have to go back, look through everything here, we'd probably meet with detention, as well as detox, and then we'd definitely want to call references for both. I mean, we know Summit, but we've never dealt with Trinity, so we'd like to call the references and, and check that out, too. I believe I'll be back at the board on the 7th of January to make a recommendation.
Competitive bids, that's nice.
It is, yes.
It certainly, it certainly would seem to me, though, that, that in terms of the sliding scale bid, the likelihood of us being below 143 would be...
Yeah, depends, I'm not sure what the numbers are at detention on a regular basis, but I think that would be, that would probably be 30.
You know, we're, we're always full at the, on the secure one, and that's at 30 now, and that's going to only go up as soon as we open up. So you can almost count on 60 there.
Yeah. Yep, which is like...
And then, and then what detox has, what, 8?
They can range, they, they fill up all the time, too, yeah, so they have quite a few numbers.
Well, I would think that it would, wouldn't be very often that we'd fall below the 143 count, I would think.
I wouldn't think it would either.
Between all three of them, so just keep that in mind.
Certainly will. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Happy holidays, everybody.
You too.
Thanks for getting it in quickly.
Okay, next item is a public hearing to adopt resolution 2019-44 for tax abatement properties. Lori, good morning, Lori.
Good morning. This is just a formality, this is the two-year abatement that we approve every other year, so in 2018, we actually approved a new two-year abatement, so this is the off year, so this is, this is the resolution, or the hearing that we have to have, and, and resolution to approve the payments for this year, and allow citizens to reply to this.
So we have to open a hearing, now we have to open a hearing.
We have a motion to open.
Second motion.
Motion and a second, open the public hearing, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Okay, anybody that would like to be heard out there, I have seen...
Nobody's contesting their opinion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Motion and second to close the public hearing, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
So, so Lori, we do this every two years.
Right, so this, so in the even year, we actually approve a, a new two-year abatement, if you so choose.
Yes, yep.
In the off year, we just have to approve the parcels that are, that qualify for the next year.
So, so some of these parcels could be on their first year, and some could be on their second?
Correct, yep.
In this list?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve 2019-44?
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt the resolution 2019-44. Any further discussion? Hearing not now, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lori.
Merry Christmas, Lori.
Soon as this is due, go back.
Okay, highway departments, Dave is not here yet. So let's do some committee reports and get that out of the way. Jenny, you got anything for us?
Last week, I attended the pick committee. We covered an item coming up here with the highway department, and then just discussed some policy, policy issues that will probably be bringing for conversation to this board. I also attended the ordinances, planning commission, subcommittee that we have, and if you recall, we're working through our county ordinances to address issues that may be redundant or contradict in different areas, so we'll keep working on that. One thing that is interesting to me that, is that we don't allow billboards in rural Clay County, did you all know that? It's interesting to me, so I think we'll be discussing that further, and then I also attended the MetroCOC meeting, a good conversation on the 17th Avenue corridor in Fargo, potential for adding some bike lanes, which would line up fairly nice to, is it Wood Park, uh, Moorhead Park, no, I think it is the Chlore.
Gooseberry?
Yeah, Gooseberry Park, so it would line up nice with that, good conversation on that, but...
Are you saying that you want billboards? I was going to go back a couple lines.
Am I?
No, I mean, that, whatever you're...
I just find it interesting.
I don't, I mean, I like that idea, I mean, you come into the highway from, from the west, you know, you see, I, sometimes I count the billboards, I say, oh, I don't know, close to 30, 40 billboards, you know, I don't know, it just seems to clutter up the countryside.
Yeah, it may do that, I guess from my perspective, I think it's a good opportunity to promote local businesses, I think it's a good commercial endeavor, I think you can address, if you, address how many per...
I guess the farmer can always say, yes, you can put one online or not, they have that option.
Yeah, so anyway, it was just interesting to me, I think we'll definitely be talking further on that, but I think historically, I think early '90s maybe was when they said that had gotten into effect, but that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Kevin?
Okay, on December 18th, we had our Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting. There's some discussion about some mechanical things in the throat of the burner, or whatever, that they're going to be looking at replacing. I don't think it was anything real significant. And then we told that the, they're looking at going to a PTO policy for their employees, and that's going to be brought before board in January, February. And then we probably spent the most time talking about MCIT just changing the way they cover their four, there's four facilities like ours in Minnesota, and for some reason, they haven't been able to get a policy to cover the structure itself, the structures itself, so we were in a little bit of panic mode, because we got a letter saying that as of December 31st, there'd be no coverage on, on the building, you know, and when you think of that, there's still a $26 million bond liability on it, and if that thing were to be wiped out, that could be costly to all the members. So we did instruct our director to get ahold of MCIT, and we did get a letter confirming that MCIT will be covering our building through 2020, and allow us some time to get out on the market ourselves and to find something, so that's pretty much that meeting. On the same day, we came back and we had a diversion public outreach meeting, and they just kind of reviewed some of the things that had gone on, they did a recap on those bio geo monitoring easement meetings, they talked about the North Dakota Water Conference that was held December 3rd to the 6th, and we had a reminder that the basin commission conference is January 14th through the 16th in Fargo. And then, right after that, we had the land management meeting.
Oh, I guess I had, I had that meeting as well.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Moser was also there. And there was really not, not much action taken on those, it was more reports from the Cass County Joint Water Resource District, and we did review some property acquisition philosophies, they were looking to update that, that's, that's been around for a while now, and there's been changes in the acquisition process. And then Thursday afternoon, I attended the MCC JPA, the Minnesota, or Moore, Clay County Joint Powers Authority meeting, and we looked at a design survey, right-of-entry form deal that's going out. We had a task order for, for appraisal services, and a task order for 2020 farm, 2020 farm land management. And that's about it, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Okay, just had the one meeting in the Historical Society, there we discussed some of the projects that have been worked on, that Mark Peel's working on, he's working on displacement of native people, I think it'd be an interesting thing, when he gets that thing set up, there's also one on Civil War vets that he's working on, a museum, that they're going to put up for the Civil War vets, and also on the history of Clay County. Now, the Clay County was established in 1872, and our question at the Historical Society was, is Clay County itself forming a committee to, for the historic, I don't, in 2022, which is going to happen, the 150th anniversary of Clay County, are we going to have a committee or anything like that to work on, are we doing anything? I mean, the museum is going to work on something, I don't know if we want to be involved with the museum, or, I don't know if we discussed that yet or not, but that's, that's something I think we have to put on our radar, that whether we want to be involved in that or not.
I think it would be appropriate to talk further with the museum about some sort of joint, I certainly don't think we each need to do something separate, maybe, or to work together.
I mean, it's just something that's coming up, that, I mean, I realize it's a ways that, you know, we're talking a couple of years yet, I mean, well, yeah, but it's coming up, you know, so... A lot of the things we did, we had a resignation by one of our members, Deb White from Moore City Council was appointed to replace a member as a board member, so she's on the board at the Historical Society now, and also, we're doing a big lighting project at the place, we're trying to, they got a grant to do lighting, put LED lights in there, hopefully that'll help out, I know, with the looking at that rent increase, or, or rent, and by doing this lighting project, doing our part in reducing the cost of operating at the museum. Also, we discussed budget, got our budget lined up for the next year, so those are the, my meeting, I mean, that was just the one meeting I had.
Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, on Tuesday, December 17th, I attended the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Committee meeting, and we had a presentation by Sarah Shadlane Grass, who is the executive director of the Lotus Center Incorporated at Moorhead, it's a relatively new treatment option, it's located next to the library, there are seven founders, all counselors. The topic she... Uh, the topic she spoke, one of the things that they are bringing to their agenda is harm reduction, uh, and recovery enhancement options. Uh, they have options for people to go two to three times per week. They do C D assessments, chemical dependency assessments. And they provide space for support groups. She gave us a nice, uh, nice presentation and, uh, hope the best for that organization. And then on Wednesday, I attended the Diversion Authority Finance Committee. We had an update on the W F I actions by Attorney Shockley. Uh, we also had a report from Executive Director Joel Paulson. And then there was a discussion among the commissioners and members of the committee about an anticipated audit demand for up to three years. Uh, and they set aside, they suggested setting aside a hundred thousand dollars to re, to reserve for, to pay for those audits. And they approved a twenty twenty budget of one hundred thirty-eight million, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars. And they passed a land acquisition directive for Clay County. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And let's see, uh, I had the PIC meeting, which has been reported on. I had, uh, P D C, uh, meeting, and we had, uh, staff updates and a summary of last year's activities. Uh, I also attended Prairie Lakes, which Kevin reported on, and I had a, uh, diversion authority meeting, which, uh, um, most of that was involved in a closed session on some legal issues. And that was it for me. So we'll wait for you, Steve. Dave, come on up. We'll let you take your care of it. Morning.
Got, uh, four items on the agenda today. Uh, first one being approval to replace our G P S equipment, originally purchased in two thousand nine. We put a four-year life on it. We did replace in twenty thirteen, and, uh, we'd like to do so again. Uh, we're getting a really good trade-in deal by going at the end of the year. So we're looking at trading in our two G P S units and then one total station unit. Uh, there is internal service funds available. The contract, and it's through, uh, the Minnesota State Bid Contract Process, through Frontier Precision, which is who we originally bought them from, and then we did the second replacement. Final cost being seventy-nine thousand, eight twenty-five point two zero.
Okay. Board's wishes on that one?
These were brought up, uh, through Highway Tracking and right for approval. I would move to approve the purchase.
Motion and a second, uh, on the G P S equipment purchase. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
The second item is a looking, uh, every, at updating our equipment rates. And it, it's a little confusing, but it's not equipment rates that you would, so to speak, bill out. It's more of an internal. So as we're doing roadway maintenance, all the, all the roadway costs are associated with maintenance on a certain road. And, you know, at the end of the year, if you've got an X amount of final numbers and you divide that with your roadway maintenance costs, we, we're ending up with kind of a, an extra sum of unallocated dollars. So essentially what it means is we're just not using the right internal, uh, hourly rate for our equipment. It's been something that Ann has brought up to me before. Uh, we took a look at it. We did meet at the Highway Committee and, and explained a little bit. The only major impact, or the only impact that we'll really see to outside customers, so to speak, would be townships on the contract hourly. We really don't have a lot of hourly maintenance. I'd say ninety percent plus of the townships contract through us on a full-time basis. So it's, it's not a, a real big increase. And that, that's not why we're doing it, to get more money. It's basically shifting more money from the unallocated portion of maintenance to the allocated portion. So it, so it looks better. And, um, there's a couple of different ways we could've done it. We could've increased our rates. Uh, if we do increase our rates, it might have some impacts with, like a disaster with how, what we get for reimbursements for, through FEMA. So I guess we kind of decided maybe we should just adopt the FEMA rates as our equipment rates. That way, if we do have disasters in the future, that we don't have conflicting numbers and we can just have one rate and we don't get a little less or a little more funding, I guess. Did I explain that, Lori?
Yeah, I think so. I, you know, and this was a recommendation come from, from Ann and, and the accounting department. And, you know, I think, uh, MINDOT looks at it, and if you're kind of under-reporting your, they, they call it depreciation type of a number. And if you under-report it, do you risk getting, uh, your full allocation of dollars from the state? Uh, it's probably best that we, we stay in line with the FEMA numbers. We're, we're not talking a lot difference on a per-mile basis.
Right.
Dave, do you have those numbers? I don't think they're.
I think we were in the, let's see, I probably do have that. So I think our, uh, our current rates for like a truck is forty-six, fifty, and sixty for the motor grader. And the FEMA rate for a truck is sixty-seven, seventy, and sixty-seven, fifty. So it's about twenty dollars per hour for the truck and about seven dollars and fifty cents for the motor grader. So it's, it's not a big, a big swing, but, uh, it seems like it, at the end of the year, we're, where we were over a million dollars on the unallocated side of the accounting, where they want it to be as close to zero as possible. So I.
And when they say they, that's.
Right. That's kind of the guidance from state aid finance, I think she said. Yeah, it was.
And we suggested, you know, just kind, kind of like when we do with our, what we pay per mile for traveling, we, we just adopt the federal rate. This is kind of the, on the same type of, uh, scenario as that, so.
Yeah, I think it's just like another, one of the mandates or whatever. So make a motion to approve these rates. Second.
Motion and a second, uh, on the, in the request for the, uh, equipment rates. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Uh, third item is request to hire one full-time maintenance worker. Um, as I explained in my packet, we, we do have budget, uh, set aside for part-time staff. We always hire four part-time snow plow drivers, and we hire a couple of guys in the summertime. And what I'd like to do is take the existing budget for the one summer employee and the one winter employee, uh, in addition to some maintenance dollars that would create kind of a non-impact to the budget. Our, we talked internally for the last several years, and we feel it would be in our best interest to try to utilize existing maintenance dollars. Being that we're a little short, you know, uh, full-time employees obviously cost more. One full-time employee costs about forty-three thousand dollars more than two part-time employees. Basically, it's the benefits and then the, the extra hours. And, um, we did talk, uh, a little bit. I brought it to the PIC meeting and tried to lay out the case on, on how this would impact our department. Um, the biggest thing would be is in, I guess it's kind of summer and winter. In the summertime, when we pull four of the seven guys out to mow ditches, we don't have enough men to actually do road projects, so we're falling behind. Then in the wintertime, what we're really finding is it's hard to find guys that are available to plow snow. Uh, we just hired our, our fourth guy, um, last week to plow up in the Felton area. So it's getting harder and harder to find people that are available, that, not only that, but qualified, that you're willing to put in a truck, you know, they're well over two hundred thousand dollars. And there's a little bit to it. When you've got, uh, front plow, you got the wing, you got the underbody scraper and the sander and the box. And, um, you wanna make sure you've got someone that's got some experience in, in equipment as well. Like I said, we talked to Lori a little bit, and, uh, we would shift, um, about forty-three thousand dollars from our maintenance budget into the labor wage budget. And we would now have eight of the eleven districts would have full-time employees in there. And, uh, we feel it's gonna be a huge benefit to our department to get another full-time guy, um, help a little bit, you know, it's, obviously they'd be a little safer. They know the equipment better. There wouldn't be the learning curve. And, uh, you know, we're, we're afraid one winter, we're gonna come in, we're not gonna have a guy. So we're gonna, we'll be a little short in one of our rural districts, and it just takes that much longer to plow snow. And, you know, nobody wants that.
We did have a, like, the discussion of office and PIC and agreed with the requests.
Yeah, I think it's been discussed at Highway Tracking. It's all discussed at PIC. So I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of full-time maintenance instead of the two part-timers.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second to request any further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
And last item I have here is approval for our state travel. Um, I would like to, uh, attend our state, our national conference with our Assistant Engineer, Justin. Um, it's in Alabama this year in April. And, um, I guess I, I feel we get, we get a lot out of this. Um, it's nice to get a perspective on the national level. Uh, the conference is well put together. Uh, there's a lot of good training sessions. I think like I explained in the past, what I'd like to continue doing is they've got different tracks. They've got bridge tracks, maintenance tracks, administration tracks. And, um, we would, typically we send the Assistant Engineer to the more technical sessions and, and he learns on, um, different things in that area. And then I would take up more of the administrative session if there's stuff on, uh, how to organize fleet management, budget, training. Uh, there's always a legislative track to learn what's going on around the country on different federal fundings and programs like that. Um, we do have it in the budget, uh, but annually, we come to the board and ask permission, uh, if we decide we're gonna go or not.
Jenny?
My, uh, question is, um, one, I think not, not so much for your request, but as a whole, what is our policy on, um, on national conventions? Do we send departments every single year to national conventions? I know that we've not, since I've been on this board, sent a representative, Nicole, but that's, you know, different dis, discussion. But my concern is, um, uh, one, what is the cost? And two, is it wise for us to send both our, um, county engineer and assistant during that time in April when that's historically been, um, time for flooding? If that concerns.
Uh, that was certainly raised in Highway Tracking, and, and we, I raised that same thing. And, uh, clearly, if, if we're in a situation where there's flooding, uh, neither one of them will go. Uh, that's, that's just, you know, we made that perfectly clear with them that, that under those circumstances, they would need to stay here, so.
Because they paid the money.
Well, but I think there's a, go ahead.
In two thousand nine and twenty-eleven, um, the exact same thing happened. I think it was in Peoria in oh-nine, and they, you know, they reimburse you for that when you have a disaster. And then in two thousand eleven, I think Nathan went. Uh, we, we just sent one, and I stayed back. So, um, you, there, you know, we got history. The, Kevin's a hundred percent right. If there's any type of flooding, um, one or both of us are definitely not going to go. I'm, you know, it's, it's, there's too much going on. They do have a good policy on, on reimbursing you for that sort of thing.
For planes and everything?
Yeah, I guess.
Plane tickets?
Yeah. Travel expenses.
Right.
They'd be too busy using item number one we approved today.
So what is the cost?
Uh, I think I've got, I think it's like around thirty-five hundred dollars for employee. I've got, so conference registration on our budget is seven thousand and travel expenses is eighty-five hundred. Uh, that's for, you know, the entire year for different conferences. I guess I didn't really put a spreadsheet together on it, but I think the conference itself is like around seven hundred dollars apiece. Uh, motel rooms for the week are probably gonna be around another thousand dollars apiece or so. Um, flights are probably six, seven hundred. I should've probably itemized that a little bit. I have in the past, but.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the travel request. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. There you go, Dave. Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Steve, you've got your report for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, last Tuesday, I attended the, the highway, uh, highway, or excuse me, PIC. Uh, we addressed, uh, that's been addressed already here. Uh, on the eighteenth, I attended Land Records with, with our recorders, assessors, auditor. Uh, on the nineteenth, uh, we had central administration. We addressed campus issues, uh, projects, landfill issues, a family service center, emergency protocol that they've been working on after, after an incident that happened here within the last month. On the nineteenth, I attended the MCC J P A meeting. Um, one of the issues that's gonna be, that we discussed, uh, will be coming forward as board is, we've talked a little bit about the, the biotic and geomorphic testing. Um, there will be another right-of-entry request, or there has been a right-of-entry request made to a number of citizens in Clay County on that matter. Uh, they have received a, a number of, of approvals. Uh, there've been a number of that are working with their land agents right now. Uh, but currently, uh, we still have a number of citizens that have not signed that right-of-entry. Uh, and right now, we would be scheduled to have, uh, Mr. McShane come back, uh, before the board on January seventh, uh, requesting, uh, again, permission to move forward on, on a legal, on the legal issue, much like we've done on the previous, uh, previous right-of-entry issue. And so that will be becoming, coming again before the board on January seventh. The, uh, the nineteenth, that afternoon, I attended the, the full, uh, full diversion meeting. Uh, we heard updates from our Executive Director, legal updates, and all the updates that you spoke about in your, your committees. I did speak, uh, this morning with, with Chris McShane on the other right-of-entry's issue. Uh, and they're, they will not be serving any of, uh, any of the property owners in the right of, right-of-entry, uh, until after Christmas on the item, on the first item that's brought forward on this board. The, uh, just a couple other updates. Uh, referee Susan Solheim, uh, will, will be starting, uh, here as, uh, the new referee from the state of Minnesota on January second. Uh, she'll be doing some ongoing training with her first day here, of court here, uh, in this chamber here on January twenty-first. Right now, they're looking at court on Monday, Tuesday afternoons, Thursday, Fridays. Uh, and, uh, referee Solheim will be going to Becker County or Otter Tail on Wednesdays. Um, I provided each of the, each of you, uh, your commission committee assignments. I've, uh, Colleen and I have worked to try to keep it up to date as, as changes. But if you guys would go ahead and look, and if there are different things, I know in, uh, around the first of the year, we'll be looking at this again, uh, with a new board chair. Uh, and so, uh, if you have different items that, that we've missed on there, to let us know, and we'll make sure that we add them up. Uh, there was a question last, uh, last, uh, board meeting about the M C I T dividend, uh, for this year. We are anticipating a dividend right around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The dividend that we received this year was a hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars. So a little bit more than what was, was expected. And, uh, just a reminder, we are, we are planning to meet on our fifth, Tuesday next, uh, next, uh, week on December thirty-first. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Anything else coming forward of our plane? Anything for us?
No.
Merry Christmas.